We'll call the meeting to an end with a special committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, of Tuesday, November the 5th. I'm not going to allow any modifications to the agenda tonight. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda as presented? Counselor Donald, on favor? Thank you. All right. Okay, so just a couple, just a couple of things outlining the process as we, as we move forward into this discussion. We have one item on the agenda tonight, which is childcare services review. So from a process perspective, we're going to have the consultant present the report. We're going to have counsel have some clarifying questions of the report. And then my intention is to start off with a recommendation as part of the discussion and then move forward from there. The goal tonight is, this is a committee of the whole meeting, this is not a decision making meeting. The objective here is to provide our administration with direction on the decision, on, on course of action to bring back on November the 26th meeting. And we will go forward from there. Are there any questions from members of council on what we're doing tonight? Counselor Monka Swain.
Thank you, sir, to clarify, yes, not a decision making meeting, but we want to leave here with some clear direction for administration on where we want to go.
Yes, we will have whittled the four down to one.
Thank you.
By the time we're done tonight is my intention.
Thank you.
Further questions? Yeah, we're doing the buttons, we got the mics working. Counselor Ron Hurd.
Thank you. So the question I have is based on what Counselor Monka Swain said. Will we have enough detail to make a decision or you're saying we're going to be recommending a direction, but it's not an ultimate decision if we don't have all the answers to all the questions?
Well, yeah, that'll, yeah, that comes out through discussion and we want more information and wanted to lay it out, that's what comes up through discussion. But right now I'm confident we have enough in the plan, but we'll see. Any further discussion? All right, so I'll turn it over to Ms. Wilson, my consultant, to set us off. Not yet.
I am now, okay, am I on? I'm always on, but I'm on tonight.
This is a more informal meeting, so we're good.
I know, and I don't need to do your worship. Members of council, okay. It just seems very formal, that's all.
Well, it's, yeah, it's, we anticipated a crowd, so we moved on anyway.
So as, as you mentioned, we're here tonight to present Phase Two draft report. So we're here to provide an update. After we went back out for public engagement back in September, we brought together the report. And this has been a culmination of almost, what, 18 months that we've, we've asked Grant Thornton to pull this report together for us. I'm not going to go through the whole RFD, but needless to say, the last public engagement was back in September. We had a very successful public engagement, the information is, forms part of this report that you've received already. And so we will be speaking to that. And I have tonight, I actually have Clemens Rutledge from Grant Thornton, who will be speaking to the report and the recommendation and also
Daniel Eot.
Daniel Eot is here tonight because Daniel has had input into the, into the report itself as well. So the findings of the report and the recommendation that's being presented is, has actually changed slightly to, to consider expanding, sorry, exiting with partners. So that is a little bit of a new development and the consultants are here to speak to their recommendation to answer questions on the public engagement and to provide information so that we can give you some direction moving forward.
Good, all right. Ooh, I get both of them.
It's stereo.
It's stereo, that's the last thing anyone wants.
Good evening, everyone, thanks for, for having us back again. I am not going to spend a great deal of time going through the report, there's no, there's no PowerPoint presentation. I think everybody, I understand, has had a chance to read, it's been available since the end of last week for people to go through. I know I've had some communication with staff and, and with community members about this, so I know that the, the discussion is out there around it. So I'd like to just walk very quickly through the recommendation. It's, it's available in print, it's, it begins on page three of the report, if anybody is, is able to help us put that up on the screen, it'll probably be pretty small though. And then leave the majority of the time available for questions where I think the real meat of the things will come out is, is people having, having read the report may have questions that, that in some aspect either the report covers, but it's another area of the report, or that they feel that the report does not cover and they'd like a little bit more color on it, I feel that that's probably the most productive use of, of our time here today, so. So as Kim said, since the, the, the previous draft of the Phase Two report, there has been a change. The single largest, there's a number of things that have impacted that change, but the, the biggest impact was the, the news that a number of the private providers that we had wondered if they would ever open, have in fact opened, and there are a few more in the books. And, and the list of them is, appears towards the end of the report, about two thirds of the way through. There are other factors as well though, but that, that was really the main one. The second thing I'll say before I read the, the little blurb here that describes the, the recommendation is that in some ways this is actually the same recommendation. It's, it's different mostly in nuance and in language, because at core, the, the piece that we wanted to propose that the city consider remains in place. And that is the idea that we find a way to continue to do the wonderful work and to maintain the history of excellence that Beaumont has had in the delivery of childcare and the experience that that's resulted in for families and children in the community, while trying to find a way at the same time to, to help the city exit from being the direct deliverers of that same kind of program, the same experience. Before, we called it expansion with, with partners, this, this is called exit with partners. But the piece, the pieces are, the two large pieces are exact, were, are the same. In the first version and in this version, we had the idea that we would work with the, the private and other possible providers in the city to, to, to transition the direct delivery to them while maintaining some role, whether it's in, in seen as facilitation or providing guidelines, subsidizing, those various factors that come of the report, all of those pieces have remained the same. We just shifted a bit more because, and, and again, it's because of the, the apparent interest of private providers, whether they've seen an opportunity in, in the market that has given them some confidence, or whether it's simply the business processes and getting the various permits and applications and licensing, maybe it's simply taken that long, but for whatever reason, within the past six months or so, these things have finally landed and we've also, as I've said, caught wind of some new things. And with that new confidence, that there are in fact are going to be new providers in the community, then the, the, the need that the, the city would provide, that those spaces that it provides were numerically important, they're important, the parents have given us clear feedback, they are very important qualitatively to the experience of their children, to the confidence they have, but as the number of spaces has grown citywide, the numerical importance has now shifted. So that's given us the confidence to change the idea, to go from the idea of exiting with partners to, sorry, from expanding with partners to exiting with partners. So I'll just read the, the piece here that is particular Jimmy in here, says the Grant Thornton project team concludes that the option that strikes the best balance between the various factors informing childcare delivery in the city of Beaumont is a modified version of the third option, exit with partners. The modification is that while transitioning away from direct delivery of childcare services, the city not step away from all involvement in maintaining the high standards that have historically been a hallmark of childcare delivery in Beaumont. We suggest this could be accomplished by coupling a fixed subsidy or grant with strings to be used in a way that elevate the levels of training, staffing, facilities. The city of Victoria and the Waterloo region are both examples of municipal governments playing a very active role in the delivery of childcare in their communities without the constraints of directly delivering the service themselves. The shape of our recommendation is influenced by three factors primarily. Number one, the value of quality childcare to the social and economic health of Beaumont. Number two, the growing number of private providers in the area. And number three, the long history and expertise in childcare that is the legacy of the existing program. Stop there. Because I'm sure people have a lot of questions.
Okay, so thank you very much, and like I said, you're quite correct, we've all been through this report at length, so I'll open it up to questions from members of council. Counselor Monka Swain.
Thank you, your worship. I think the, the recommendation exit with partners modified is a bit misleading, maybe a bit too cute. I asked seven or eight folks, you know, to read their recommendation and what they thought it meant, and they all provided a different answer. So I want you to clarify for me if, if that's okay.
Sure.
The way I interpret it is you're essentially saying we're going to exit from, from delivering the program, correct?
Yes.
And, and then there is a potential of a step, but ultimately the recommendation is to exit, right?
The direct delivery, yes.
Sorry.
So the delivery of childcare using your employees.
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor? Yeah, I just ran off. So how did you get, so you mentioned the September meeting, or it was mentioned, how did you get feedback from that meeting?
We were given the notes.
So the, the notes as in that was attached to?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the, the amount of comments, well, I guess the question is, how did, how did those notes influence the report? And I know you, you, you had a table at the back of, of the information that was provided to us. And I guess the frustrating part that I found with that is obviously not, not for you guys not being in the room, right, and then the challenge of how to interpret that, but like if I look at page 71, it, it makes a comment. Option four, end involvement.
We don't, our stop's at 56.
Your page, so it's the page 71 of our, of our PDF document?
That's the second last page.
So again, option for end involvement, and, and I appreciate that you talked about not being part of. Ultimately, what I heard from you is that you're recommending that we get out of the direct delivery of childcare.
Yes.
So the way I interpret that is we're talking here, option for end involvement. And if you, if you look at, if you look at how the feedback was considered, what has been changed in the Grant Thornton report? You indicated that this feedback did not result in any significant changes.
Sorry, can I pause you for a moment? No, option four, both, in the previous version of this report and this one, we make a distinction between exit three and, and, sorry, option three and option four. Option four is a complete exit of direct delivery with no further involvement. And particularly, one of the things that we write in the report is that the nature of the exit is also very different because whereas option two, three primarily considers things like providing certainty through the transition for parents as the primary driver for how the exit happens. In option three, the, the primary driver is the, you know, the certainty the parents have. So the option four is primarily financial, so we just pick a date and end it. Whether parents are ready or not, we just say, you know what, we're not in this business anymore, we're going to move on. Option three, we work in a far more collaborative fashion and get out of the program with that consideration. And then the modification that we've put in here is also substantially different. So option three is, does include an ongoing relationship with partners. We're not suggesting that, that the city remove itself from all interest in, in childcare, which option four would suggest. And we're not suggesting option four.
And so I'll come back to my original comment, I think that's getting too cute. I think ultimately, we, what you're saying is we're going to end involvement, we're going to end it, so the program as it stands there is ending.
The program as it stands, yes.
Yeah, so I think if you, I think if, yeah, so that's what I mean by getting too cute. So the concern that I have and the, the exact reason why we asked to have that direct session with the community is so that we could hear directly from the community, right, and I appreciate you not being there, but my, my concern throughout this whole process is, you know, hearing, seeing a large report from a consultant and not being able to have that opportunity to hear directly from, from residents. We did take that chance and, and concerning that, that feedback, you know, what I heard that day was that obviously the four options, none of them were the great, they weren't great, but if anything, it was to look at the cost recovery. And then from there, we asked them, we even had to modify the, the actual session because it was so overwhelming there that we said, okay, which one of these three or four options, part of the cost recovery, did you, did you intake? And so I just recall the spotted map, right, and again, if we didn't have that conversation, it wouldn't be reflected in, in the report, so. So that, that, so basically your, your answer is that, you know, you, you had, you got the summary notes, but not the specific feedback. So I think there's a little bit of disconnect there, but I, I appreciate you clarifying that. The, the last question I'll ask here is a bit of talk, and maybe this is for administration here, about the not-for-profit entity here being able to fundraise and that sort of thing. So I wondered if you could just speak a little bit about what that would entail. Heard a lot of positive feedback to potentially offer that as a, as a way to, to help reduce the impact. So can you speak a little bit about how that, how that would go? What do we, what do we need to do to be able to get to that position?
Okay, so obviously that, that was something that came up at the public engagement. The, the thought being around that was that there could be some sort of parent body, some parent board, some parent committee that would be able to fundraise, perhaps there might be some opportunities for some casinos, some fundraising to offset some of those costs. So that, that was certainly some of the discussion that I heard that evening as a, as an option to consider.
Yeah, and maybe I should be clear with my questions, or I, I totally get the purpose of it, I guess the, the question is how do we actually do that? Can we do that as a, as a, as a city, if we are still in childcare? Can a city do that? Do we need to restructure the board, is that something easy to do? I, I don't know the, the regulations around that, I guess.
Okay, so that, that, I, I think that's twofold. So in, in the past, there was a Friends of Childcare. So the Friends of Childcare was a separate entity. So it was actually a society that was formed that was pretty much parent driven, that could do these fundraisers, and it was at arm's length. So no, it was the municipality we couldn't, but through this separate entity that enabled them to apply for grants, do fundraising types of things. So that's, that's certainly one option. Then the other option, and I'm not sure if we're confused with that, is the idea of actually the parents or residents taking over municipal childcare and running it as a non, not-for-profit or society. But that, those are two slightly different things, right?
For sure, yeah.
For sure, so I mean.
Yeah, I was more talking about the former and you answered it, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I appreciate that. Those are my questions, thank you.
Counselor Donald.
Thank you, your worship, thank you for coming to see us again this evening. If I may, just going back to the recommendation transition from what it was to what it has become, I think when you put the word exit into the recommendation, that is, it's only four letters, but it's a very big word in this context of this organization and how it function, and how it functioned, how it's going forward. So many of the parents I spoke to since the report came out in the last 72 hours, basically, they saw exit, they didn't see the part of it, and I'm struggling myself with recommendation that was given to us previously, which we debated quite lengthy back in Seattle meeting back in the spring. And I don't think we had a lot of take-up from partners back then. If I recall, your early work in the, in the report was reaching out to people who had experience in this area, YMCA, boys and girls clubs, et cetera. And there wasn't exactly a lot of enthusiasm, if I'm wrong, correct me, to join with us
You're right.
in an expansion mode. So now we're suggesting a change, a change in direction, although somewhat modified, to somehow find partners yet again and be somewhat still involved. I guess what I'm struggling with is that for our city to maintain the program, right now we have control of the program. And it's great to have control of the program because you can make sure it's going the way you want it to. I'm, I'm struggling with the idea of exiting with partners where we still have some control, but not complete control. How's it going to work? I'm, I'm trying to get my head around that because that, to me, is fraught with uncertainty in many different ways. And I know our parents in the room who aren't part of the program, parents that aren't in the program, understand from the, from the subsidy perspective, how do we manage that? How do we get there? Partner Report also suggested a two-year subsidization continuation, at the same time not expanding the program, so as kids aged out, I'm, I'm trying to get to that point, I'm trying to understand the logic of, of your recommendation, which is only recommendations, it's not binding by any means, it's just a recommendation, we're clear on that. How are we going to get there without, but the Godfather says, you try to go and they pull you back in? Two years from now, if this doesn't work with this idea of, of control with partners, how are we going to be any further ahead than we are right now? Very long with the question, some, some narrative and a questionnaire.
No, it's good. Could you help, it would be really helpful if you could break it down, it just, because I think there's sort of three or four questions buried in, in what you said.
Okay, which one do you want first?
It happened you kind of attacked them one by one.
Which one do you want?
Which one's foremost on your mind? Which is the one that gives you the most pause?
Explain to me, please, the recommendation of a two-year potential, I think you said in the report, again, the page number, no more, no more growth in the program, so as people, as, as kids aged off from the program, there'd be a two-year subsidization while we're doing this exit with partner strategy.
Yeah, yeah.
Paint the picture, how that's going to happen in the future, we can't find, we couldn't find partners before to expand with, how are we going to find partners going forward with an exit strategy at the end? How do we do that?
One of the things that's different, again, it's a bit of a nuance, but there, there are material differences between how we envisage the idea of a partner when you are expanding with them as opposed to more of a transition out where you've got a clearly set out path for a handoff to them. And then, as you suggested, maintain going forward past that, that transition, some control, for instance, by providing some form of subsidy with, with strings attached. And I use the example of, of Kitchener and the whole Waterloo region that's doing something like this in their program. They provide some funding with the stipulation that, that the other participants come up to certain standards in order to receive that funding. So that's the, that's the string that the municipality maintains. Wasn't really the question you asked, but around the 24 months, so the 24 months piece was simply the idea, and it's, you know, this is not a, there's a third, once you, once council and the city has chosen, once the community has chosen a way forward, we have the responsibility to assist you and the administration to create a roadmap going forward that goes into a great deal, a great deal more detail than, than we provided here. But, so we, we picked the 24 months as something that was relatively high level. And what that looked like for us was, and I explained this to a parent the other day, is we would simply take the period of the current year so that if, if the, if the city were to make a decision the next few months, this year would have to play out anyways. And then it's probably reasonable to say whatever the transition that would happen after that would take, should consider two full school years, so September to June for two years, might be three. Again, it was, it's a high level option, so that's, that's where that number came from. As, then you'd ask, you know, does that create any certainty in terms of the engagement? Yes, I think it creates more certainty than the expansion with partners, because the expansion with partners option suggested a far more intimate relationship with those partners. That is, you form some kind of a steering committee with them, there was a unified model of delivery, perhaps some central administration. It was a much more tightly woven program where the city and its partners would truly co-deliver the program. The exit with partners doesn't quite see it that way, it's, it's more of a program in which the, the providers deliver and the city simply, and so this, we provided some, again, high level early suggestions, educational top-ups, training top-ups, play whatever user rate relievers the city has available to it, perhaps to make space more directly available, something in, in terms of facilitating the ease of delivery and the ease of, of a private business, setting up business if it opted into a program that maintains certain standards that the city established. So it's, it's more, far more, it's really just all we, all the city is left with in, in the exit with partners is the ability to continue to provide some form of subsidy and support, but beyond that, and, and establishing some standards, but did not, for instance, co-deliver or co-administer a program, which would have been the expansion with partners. It would still very much be the table in some kind of board or steering committee or something like that.
May I continue? Hold up, yeah. Thank you, I, I appreciate that. I guess what I'm getting around is, is I'm a little too black and white sometimes, for my own good, which is sometimes good, sometimes bad. I mean, right now, we have control of the program right now.
Yes, you do.
And I like that we have control of the program for all kinds of reasons. We all know people who have kids in the program now currently, kids who've gone through the program, it's a fantastic program, we control that quality. I'm nervous about the idea of passing on to somebody else to, even though we set the standards, how is it going to be delivered? The scenario you're suggesting, if we were starting from scratch, brand new, that makes sense to me because we would have the governing body, we could allocate the services. But we're in a different situation right now, and I'm struggling in my head around getting to where you're suggesting and giving up the control of the program to the extent that would have to make that model work. That's just my concern based on recommendation. I'll pass some more questions on to my colleagues, I'll come back to some more questions I have later, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Stowe.
Come on next, oh, excellent, thank you. I'm having difficulty, I'm puzzled as to how we can exit with, with, with or without a partner, well, with a partner. Looking at the, at the end of the document, there's a financial analysis and essentially we're running at last year 80, or the projected for this year, I beg your pardon, 84% cost recovery. So revenue is 84% of expenses. So if it's not 100%, it has to be 100% for any other organization to, to, to run it, no matter how it's run, whether it's run by an employee, by a house or by a partner or by a not-for-profit organization. They won't pay their bills, the money has to come from somewhere, and I'm so is it not possible, I, I don't understand how we could go to that model without first achieving approximately 100% cost recovery?
If, in the expansion with partners, that would have been a question that would need to be addressed. In the exit with partners, the exit would result in the fact that the city no longer did have what I would describe as a variable subsidy. That is, a subsidy that responded to the, the increase or decrease of costs and the increase, the decrease of revenue, and then had to fill in the gaps, because that's what the city did, or does in the current program. In the exit with partners version, what we are envisaging is a fixed subsidy, so you, because you're no longer delivering childcare services directly, that's done by other providers. You would make a fixed pot of money, $100,000 a year, $200,000 a year, and distribute that to qualifying providers. The, the way the subsidy is currently structured would no longer exist. You wouldn't have that responsibility to create top-ups anymore. Because you're not in the business of delivering childcare anymore.
But there would still be a subsidy.
If you, I would, if you chose to, to, to go for a full-blown exit, you'd then be in diversion four, if there was no subsidy, if there was no further involvement in the city, except perhaps in a, in a very sort of voluntary advisory function or something like that, you know, set up a small, a center of excellence or something like that, there would still be some role the city could say to play, but without, at least in, in our sense of things, without money, without that piece of skin in the game, it would be tough to say that the city would in fact be acting as a partner anymore, so we couldn't even use the word partner at that point. That's arguable, somebody could say, no, we, you know, we could have all kinds of moral suasion and that's, or, or, you know, set standards that way.
Yes.
But I think unless the city is prepared to continue using a financial subsidy of some kind, I'm, I'm not sure what the partnership would be anymore, from our perspective.
So the partnership, so there would still be a cost, but we would really wish.
Yes, there would.
And the cost would be much the same unless the fees go.
It could be anything, no, because the fees would be borne entirely by the market. So if I'm a private provider, I'm, I'm, I'm delivering my program, but I have the opportunity to work with the city if I deliver according to a preset, to a set of standards to have the city provide either for myself, for my staff, or in some other fashion, some kind of subsidy or top-up. And it's a fixed amount, it's not variable, that because my costs are my costs, they have nothing to do with you.
Yes. And, and then the only regulation the city has in terms of control of the program is, is that we've set the criteria. It's the financial carrot that you will, you will only receive this if you meet these criteria.
You meet these criteria, exactly right. That's well put.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Ron.
Thank you, your worship, and I can see why Counselor Monka Swain said that he heard many different versions of what this means. heard many different versions of what this means, and that was exactly my question to you, is I'm looking at this and I'm thinking we're getting out of it, and then I'm thinking, no, it sounds like we're transitioning and we're staying in as a partner, because we're still providing grounds to other organizations.
Yes, that's the difference.
So, I almost wish we had, yeah, I almost wish we had the ten recommendations of all those things you've said so far, because it seems to me there's a lot of assumptions here that are not written into what this actually is. And that's why I asked the question in the beginning, depending on what you answer to, who, where, when, how, I'm okay with it or I'm not, so there's a lot of unknowns here that doesn't give me comfort, and I also don't think this is what I heard at the meeting with the parents, I definitely heard more about we'll do some cost recovery, but we can't do it all, I heard that clearly, and we want to maintain the quality in our city, but we want to also involve the other providers in doing that. So, maybe that's what's in your head, but it's not coming out on paper that that's actually what you're suggesting.
Which part is it?
Exiting with partners, as others have said, means we're getting out of it.
It does say, it does say that you will stop the direct delivery of childcare.
And to me, it's a transition more than an exit.
No, well.
Because we're staying in, you're suggesting we stay in as some kind of partner.
I'm suggesting you stay in through a fixed subsidy and tying that to an expectation of standards.
So that's not getting out completely, so that's, I don't think the word exit is doing us any good here.
But you are, okay, well, I mean, we can choose different language, but you are exiting from the direct delivery while continuing to play a role in the quality that you expect for your community.
And if I can move on to, you understand what I'm saying, if I can move on to something else, what I'm comfortable with is seeing some type of implementation strategy that might include parents and staff and residents and potentially councillors, who then come back to council and say, here's a list of ten recommendations, what do you think of these? Because this is, this is pretty complex to try to say, okay, go in here and come back with an implementation plan for this, because this isn't clear what this is. I think more work needs to be done to find out exactly what that looks like, and as others have said, what are those partners going to be? Who are those partners going to be? Are there even partners out there that are willing? I know how difficult it is to start a nonprofit, and the city would still have to support that nonprofit in some way, shape or form to get it going.
If a nonprofit were one of the partners, we're suggesting at this point that probably be private providers, which is the Waterloo model.
Okay. Anyway, my two cents for what it's worth is that we need more detail on the implementation, and I think the parents and the staff and others that are involved have a lot to say on what that could look like.
Sure, sure.
And that would, that would help, I think would help this councillor to make a better decision. Thank you.
Councillor Moncalf Swain?
Thank you, I'm going to try and break this down a little bit simpler. So, there's exit with partners, and we'll talk about that, and then there's the whole subsidy piece. So, when you say partner, what is your, who is the partner?
The partner would be anyone who would be delivering childcare. It could be a for-profit, it could also be a not-for-profit, at this point, it looks like it'll largely be for-profits in this community.
How could, and further to councillor Stowe's point, how could someone take over a business, whether it's for-profit or not-for-profit, that is not, at least running at a hundred percent?
I don't understand the question, because they already are. So if you were to work, there's a brief list of childcare providers here, if they chose to participate with you, you would say, for instance, I use an example in here because it's easy to pick on, we would like to provide you as a private provider with, say, a training or educational subsidy. In order for us, for you to get that money from us to support your business in the city, we would expect that all of your providers are B-level-three ECEs, and the city will play a role in helping you maintain that standard by providing a subsidy.
Okay, but, sorry, so you're answering the subsidy question, I just want to go back to the partner. I can't, and I'm a simple guy, I can't understand that if you've got a business, you're looking at it, and here's your expenses, here's your revenue, how can a private provider, or even a not-for-profit, come in and look at it like, there's at least a sixteen percent gap just to get even, how can someone?
But they're not taking over your business. You're ending your business, the business as it currently exists, you're ending it.
Okay, so maybe I'll ask the question this way, what happens to the current childcare program today? What happens to it?
It winds down over the two to three years.
Winds down, so.
That's the exit piece.
Yeah, so that's why, okay, thank you, because the clarification from councillor Danlock's point was, when you say partners, to me, it seems like we're going to go out and, you know, a community, an organization that we hire, private, is going to come and go, hey, this is a great idea, I'm going to take this on, and then we're going to work on, and therefore one wants stepping out. That's not what we're saying, we're saying that we're going to get out.
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to, that needs to be clear, that this isn't someone taking over the program for what it is today, and carrying on with the staff and all that sort of stuff, so that.
There's a sub-piece in our recommendation around, you know, the privatization or setting up an independent society, but that's a carve-off of the main recommendation. The main recommendation is exactly that, that exit means exit.
Thank you, and I think that's really important for us to understand, that we're saying exit, therefore the program that exists today is no longer, and that's fair to the recommendation, and the good news about a recommendation is it's just that, we can do whatever we want, so that's great.
Absolutely, no, I said the same thing to a few parents, they're concerned that, you used a great word to oppose the recommendation, one of you did, it's not, you said, it's not something, it's just a recommendation, you're right, that's exactly what it is, it's a recommendation.
Okay, sorry, maybe I'll leave my comment then. The whole, from my understanding, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Your Worship, but we got into this, we got into this discussion, this eighteen-month discussion over a concern for a subsidy, I think, and we looked at a balance sheet and we're like, hey, is this the right thing that we should be doing for one month? So now, what the recommendation in front of us essentially is saying, we've got this great service, let's cut it, but let's keep the subsidy here, that doesn't make sense to me.
Okay.
So, why would we, why would we cut out this high-performing program and maintain a subsidy, and, yeah, maybe I'll just leave it.
No, it's a great question. You're exactly right, and one of the challenges in doing something like this is, if we were to look at this from a single input or a single factor, which would be the quality of the program, already in the Phase One report, we said the quality of the program is beyond argument, you can't argue with it, it's probably, certainly one of the best programs in the province, not in the country, parents love it, kids have a great experience of it, it does really well. The financial piece for us has always only been one of the factors, and the Phase One report said that. There are other factors that we looked at as outsiders, those would include things like, should a city be in the business of delivering a program in competition with private providers? Should a city be in the program of, in the business of providing a program that is taxpayer-funded but is not equitably available to all taxpayers who would wish to use it at any given point? When we spent time with the parents, they helped us walk through that in terms of the waiting list, and helped us understand that if a parent planned well enough and was patient enough, that their understanding was that any parent who did want to access the program with good planning could access the program. We took that under advisement, but we still think that, given the fact that there are a limited number of spaces supported by the entire city, and at the same time, there are other parents accessing private programs or needing to access private programs for various reasons, that the sense of inequity still exists. So we wanted to address that piece. Those are prob, there's others that are listed in the report as well, but that, those two questions, that there's a taxpayer-funded program, which not all taxpayers, in this case, taxpayers with children of childcare age are able to access, and the fact that there are private providers, and we've updated the language to make it slightly more pokey, a little bit more aggressive, that, you know, those private providers are themselves taxpayers, and the city's in competition with them, and that, from a business perspective, raised some questions. Now, again, from a, one of the things we've said from the very beginning is, in the end, we can drill down to as many details, we can spend years picking apart, right down to the penny, in the end, this is a values decision. This is a, this is a community that has, that holds certain values, and we can provide material that says, you know, we should, you should think about this, and here's some of the shapes and colors around this thing we'd like you to think about, but in the end, once you've thought about those things, you're going to have to throw some of them out and say, you know what, these are our values, this is the direction we're taking. So that's, you're right, from a purely financial perspective, this way forward still leaves the city on the hook to continue to pay money, and as you suggested, with the potential risk of a diminishment of the quality that exists in a hundred and thirty-eight spots we have right now. That's accurate, but we feel the recommendation addresses some of those other issues in terms of the private businesses and so on.
Thank you, and I guess, I don't know if there's any more point me poking holes through, I don't support the recommendations, so probably time for me to be quiet and wait for it, so.
See, we'll get to debate.
Yeah.
In a few, we're still on questions of other reports.
And I guess, I mean, I got my list here, but I think it's pretty clear where I'm going, so I'll pick it up to others and we'll get to that.
We're still on questions. Councillor Danlock?
Thank you, Your Worship, and you're probably to where I'm going to, actually, but on the recommendation itself, I'm listening to what you're saying, Clement, and I'm getting my head around as best I can, but I still have concern with the recommendation, because if we took the model where we have, where you become a supervisory body, if you will, call it that.
That's a great term.
And we set the parameters for the suppliers to deliver the services.
Yes.
You said something, Keem, a moment ago, we could say, we want to, only want to have level-three workers, right? That's our criteria. We want to have so many kids per worker, per hour in each particular classroom or work area, right? Okay. We're already doing that right now. We already have the parameters of the program set out, we already have level-three people, I see nothing gain to step back, because if we maintain control of the program, we maintain control of the program.
Yes.
And you mentioned the philosophy and the value thing, I get that, we discussed this back in, back in the spring, should we be part of daycare, part of our services as a municipality? I don't think so, I feel that way, but we're so far down the rabbit hole, we have such a, in the terms of delivering service, we have such a fantastic program, everyone thinks it's a very good program, I'm not prepared to step away from it, I don't trust a partner to do a good job on that.
You got a question?
Oh, yeah. Okay, so the question is?
Here's the part that's taking this program on.
Yeah, that's correct.
We need to change the language. It's the part that's taking this on.
Yeah, yeah. Well, we'll get, we'll get. Okay. We'll get to that part, when we argue the recommendations and how we want to go and how we see it. Questions on the report? If we're done with questions on the report, I'm more than happy to move into discussion, because that seems to be where a couple of us are at.
Okay, I got a question.
What's your question?
All right. So, if you don't mind joining me, please, on page eighteen of your report, or sixteen, pardon me, and at the very bottom, we talked earlier back in the spring, that the eighty percent model it says there, right now eighty percent, then ninety, then one hundred?
Yes.
Okay, we talked back in the spring that because of a situation where one employee is no longer going to be replaced.
Yes.
That would move the needle from eighty to eighty-five percent approximately, and now I'm seeing at the bottom of this page, that in 2019, the full year of 2019, that'll be fifty-four thousand. So in my mind, the subsidy of approximately two eighty thousand dollars a year is reduced by fifty-four thousand, which puts cost recovery now, right now, around eighty-five, eighty-six percent, right now, not eighty. This report still says the eighty in the column there, and we talked back in the spring about adjusting for that, and the report didn't do that, in my opinion. And so we're actually at an eighty-five percent, eighty-six right now, not eighty when it comes to cost recovery. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
Thank you.
Councillor Stowe? Oh, don't have to thank you. I just wanted to clarify something in the conversation with councillor Moncalf Swain you just had. So, let's just talk through this, the recommendation that you've made, in practical terms, so what happens, there's a two-year transition period during which the existing program and the existing staff slightly tapered off?
Well, we, the report talks about the idea of tapering might not be feasible, because the will, to taper it down to zero is unlikely to work, because the fixed costs and the overhead will remain, so at some point, the subsidy would grow so large as to make it unviable. So there'll probably, there'll have to be a cutoff point where we say, you know, right now, we're at a hundred and thirty X odd children, we get below sixty, there's simply going to have to be a hard end to it, because continuing to taper past that point won't make any sense. But the timeframe you suggest is probably reasonable, some form of structured transition over two to three years seems reasonable.
Okay, so regardless of whether it's a cutoff or a taper, at some point, that program is, perhaps not suddenly, but is terminated.
As it exists right now, yes.
And a new program is set up, meeting the criteria that we already established, which as far as we can make them would be the same as the existing program.
Similar, probably.
But it's, but it is a completely different program, starting from scratch, effectively.
Yes. This, for instance, the program might consist of an advisory board or a steering, or something like that, or a single employee, we suggested, it's in the report, there's a great deal of expertise here, that that person could become an ombudsman for the delivery of childcare services and act in that, so, but that would be a brand-new position, it'd be a brand-new, yes, something new would arise out of this.
Understood. So, it's, yes, it's effectively a brand-new program, which can draw on the experiences and possibly many of the staff of the original program. So at that point, then, and the city is still paying a subsidy.
We're recommending, yes.
To provide that program, to bridge the sixteen percent or whatever it is.
No, it's no longer functioning as a bridging function, it's a simple subsidy that, you will set the dollar amount, distribute it amongst the providers who chose to participate.
Yes, okay, I chose the wrong word there, what I mean is, it's still providing a subsidy to, that is intended to cover the gap between revenues and expenditure.
No.
None?
No, the entity to whom, so say there was a private provider involved, and they were, they could be fully profitable, they don't need help in becoming, they're a private provider, they're already a for-profit organization, you're providing, say, either a training subsidy, a spatial subsidy, a per-child subsidy, could be something else, but you're not, you're not helping them run their business.
No, I'm not suggesting that, I'm suggesting that we would still have to pay a subsidy of some kind.
If they met your standards, yes.
In order to have them meet their standards.
Breakoff would be some help, some financial support.
Because they must face many of the, they must face the same fiscal reality that the existing program faces.
Are you getting, are you, clarifying question, because when he's talking about the subsidy, I think you're talking about it being available to every provider, not just the one that we're transitioning out of.
The conditions, yes, correct.
So it'd be a granting program for all daycare providers, not just ours.
But the net result is, we're still paying something like the amount, that's still coming out of taxpayers' funds.
Not for that one program, for all the programs.
For all the programs that are provided. So we're addressing the equity, what, the advantage of doing this is we address the...
It becomes, one way of describing it would be, it becomes performance-based, so anybody that, anyone, it democratizes it from the basis of performance, any organization that meets a standard gets the money.
And we don't have to set it as high as it currently is now, instead of lower, instead of higher.
Yes, obviously, obviously, I just want to, I want to understand exactly what the full reality of the proposal is, and visualize what this would actually mean in order to implement, what the costs would be, and what the benefits or disadvantages would be of doing that. So what we're doing is overcoming the inequity of, I'm subsidizing these childcare spaces but not those.
Yes.
As it exists in the current program.
Yes.
And we're also addressing the issue of, I'm not running a, or the city's not running a taxpayer-funded childcare program in direct competition with privately managed ones, as you say, are also taxpayers. So those two inequities are addressed. Thank you, that's the extent of my question. The program disappears, yes.
Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Your Worship. So two questions, one is just following up on the daycare, and the second one is about school age, let's give you a heads up on that. Why did you choose not to recommend a transition to a partner? And why is it an exit to a partner? Why not a transition where you maintain and you hand over?
There's a number of reasons, the biggest one was the growing number, the report we'd had, it was only a matter of weeks ago, that the reports of private businesses coming finally materialize into private businesses actually being here, because for a long time, that was, while it might not seem significant in hindsight... Because for a long time, that was, while it might not seem significant in hindsight, when we're in the middle of this thing, the idea of transitioning upwards, particularly after you'd already interviewed, you know, the regional director for the Boys and Girls Club, for the YMCA, a lot of local providers, spoken to people in the city, it seemed for a significant period of time, like the not-for-profits weren't interested because the city struggled to be able to provide space that met their standards, which is a huge issue for them. And there were so many rumors of private providers, yet none of them seemed to be showing up. They didn't open their doors. So we felt very uncomfortable recommending that more full-blown thing where you're actually co-delivering with them, you know, would be a completely different recommendation when we didn't have any evidence that they were ever actually going to show up. So once it looked like the private providers were finally here, which gave us some confidence that perhaps the market is beginning to see this as a place where a private business could set up, could create value, provide a service and make money within the boundaries of Beaumont, that that would give us the confidence that children would have a home during, you know, for, during the times that daycare is provided, which we didn't have the confidence before. So exits simply seem more feasible now than it is, again, I said, I used the word earlier, numerical, and that's really, it was about the numbers.
Okay. We'll debate later, but the other question is about school age. So it was recommended in the report that school age is actually, we were told, more of a break-even.
It's very close to that.
Potentially could make money.
Yeah, yeah.
So are you recommending that be separated out, or do you need one of us to direct that, to make that motion? Or?
Yeah, that's another, that's an implementation conversation as far as a roadmap, once council has made a choice. It gets complicated because while in and of itself it is profitable, it still draws on the fixed costs that are described in the original policy C24. There is still the cost to the city. There's also the economies of scale. Is it profitable because it's being run by, you know, and managed by the same people that are running the European Childhood Program? If you separate it off and asked it to run completely on its own, with its own staffing and its own management, would it still continue to be able to do it on a break-even basis? I'm not convinced it would. We didn't dive that deeply because council hasn't made a choice yet, but I have my concerns that it would not be able to break even as a completely standalone program.
Did you look at the demographics as well, to see what the.
To some extent, yes.
For the school age?
Yeah. At this point, the demographics would be favorable.
That we need that program?
Yes.
I agree. Thank you.
Counselor Danilak.
Thank you, your worship. This will be a quick question this time, just to be on the safe side, okay?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you. On page, sorry, page 40 of the report, we're talking about the two-year window and the idea of the program not to take new registrations and let them age out over that two-year period. Just a quick question is, so just assume for a moment, there were six kids in the first year that aged out and eight in the second year. What happens to the staff of the program? Because it was based on so many staff per number of children in each room, I believe ratio is one to four sometimes, one to six sometimes, one to 10, based on the room. So in that two-year age-out period, what happens to the staff? That's not part of the report.
No, no, it's not, because again, it's an implementation step. I'm going to be, I know I'm going to be on record, but nonetheless, I would imagine that you would probably be trimming staff. If you use the tapering model, there would also be a tapering in staffing.
Okay.
Or the city could choose to continue to incur past the numerical need for the staff just to provide a softer transition. I mean, that's an option for council to consider, but one option would be a more financially-driven choice, which is that as the pupil-teacher ratio decreased because of the decrease in enrollment, that you would also be tapering staff.
Thank you.
Counselor Monkoff Swain?
Thank you. It may be a question from Ms. Williston, but following up on Counselor Barnhart's theme regarding the school age side, it's my understanding that a lot of the teachers working during the day at the early learning childcare center, and so if that were to exit, would it be still possible to run that at essentially cost recovery?
I don't think I can give you an exact figure, but I think you are aware that the staff during the daytime do go up to the early learning center. And so that's how, how we operate. So that, that helps to offset some of the costs from the after-school care piece. So I don't know. I'd have to talk to Curtis, and he's not here.
But fair to say that part of that cost is shared by, by the early learning.
Yes.
Center. Okay, thank you.
All right, the board is clear. So has everybody asked enough questions of the consultants? Verify on the report. Okay, so that brings us to, to the point where we got to come up with some type of recommendation for a direction. And so we've already started with the recommendation, so I think that's probably a good place to start the conversation, and everybody can travel down the path as they come up. So we'll leave it at that. So I got to be honest, though, I did not see that recommendation as being as black and white as it was coming out within, from members of council. I did not see it as a hard exit. I did not see it as winding down the program. I did not see it as getting out. And so when I saw that, I was among Kathy's vein, I saw it as a transition, where we would work with a partner to transition the program, to somebody who would take it over, we would bring in the subsidy, we could maintain some type of childcare subsidy, and it would be available to all the providers. And the hook there is, is that we could take our, take the excellence that's currently in the program we have now and bring it to Beaumont as a whole. So we could do something innovative and far-reaching that would benefit our community as a whole and not just our 138, 128 spaces. And so I saw it as a way to expand and to improve and to move on, whereas you guys are scaring me, like we're hard out, we're done, we're going, and there's no, no way. And so I don't think, I'm not quite where you are with the hard out, but I'm, so I'm sort of in sort of a hybrid. So we got to transition it, get the costs under control, find partners, and then we can expand. So that's where I'm sitting. So I'd be interested to be here with council setting. Counselor Danilak.
Snap up, hit a button.
While you put your hand up, so.
So who would take it out? That's what I, like, that would be great, but.
Nature of bores a vacuum. Somebody will. You have, we have to actually make a decision and then go out and find it. Because right now, it's just the realm of theoretical. So nobody's going to commit until you've made a decision to actually try and do it.
So I think.
Business doesn't work that way.
Exactly. It doesn't work that way. If you're looking at a business and you're seeing 84%, and needing a 16% subsidy to carry it on, I can't see that. And the ultimate goal that we tried to do here is to provide certainty to the program. I think this adds another two years of uncertainty to it.
Yes and no. I appreciate where you guys are at, but that's going to slow conversation down. Yeah, I get where you're coming from, but part of that, part of that implementation would have to be some type of Plan B, which my Plan B is full cost recovery, but.
Counselor Danilak.
Thank you, your worship.
The recommendation, the way it stands, if we were to pursue it the way it was explained, I'm not leaning the way for it, quite frankly, at this point, but let's assume for a moment we're going down this path, that who's going to quarterback this process? Administration has lots on its plate. We've been very active council last couple of years. We have more on our plate to do in our community. We have fire, police, other things to worry about. Who's going to quarterback this process? Are we going to farm it out to a consultant, possibly Clement, possibly someone else, to quarterback this process and spend tens of thousands of dollars trying to figure out the process, trying to find a partner, get it all done? I see this being not just a two-year program, a transition. I see it being longer than that. And a substantial number of resources will be allocated to make this work, where at the end of the day, I'm not seeing, I see a veteran who are right now with our current program that we maintain control over. And I don't, I'm concerned about that, with the end product not getting what we want and spending tens of thousands of dollars and two or three years trying to get there. I'm struggling this recommendation from that perspective.
Counselor.
Your worship, and I too am struggling and was when I read the report. And of two minds, I can see where you came up with your recommendation because it tries to go in the middle, but you had explained it as a hard stop. At some point, there's a hard stop, and that's exactly what you heard, which is not what I was thinking at all, and I don't think I heard that from anybody that we consulted with. I would like to see a task force established and see if we can create the body that can run this. I know there's 15 to 20 different nonprofits running in the city of Edmonton, if not more than that, who run childcare as a business, but as a human service business, not as a business that is in it to make money, but a business that's in it to run quality childcare. I know it can happen. I know it's a ton of work, and if there's willingness in the community, between the staff, the parents, the residents to do it, then I think we give them a couple of years to do that, rather than pull the plug and say, we're getting out of it, and whatever happens, happens. So to me, that's the transition, and I think you mentioned some of that in here, but it wasn't really, that's not how you explained it now. Exit means exit, and I think transition is the better way.
Guys are killing me here. Yeah, no.
Counselor. Thank you. No, I'm having difficulty supporting the recommendation of the report as described. It seems to me the only real advantage I can see from this is that we distribute taxpayer funds more equitably across everybody who needs it, rather than just the ones who are fortunate enough to have a place in this program. But the, but the cost of doing that is we, well, we shut down an excellent program ultimately that we've already heard is unparalleled standard. Nowhere else in the, nowhere else in the province, there's only, what, three or four other municipalities that do this, and none of them have achieved the results that we have. So I'm inclined to apply a sporting metaphor and say, well, you know, you don't mess with success and you don't change a winning team, basically. Especially in this case, it seems to me it will just add more, as Counselor Monkoff Swain referred to, add more uncertainty and more doubt for at least two years over the future of the program, where, which has been apparently, which is, which I heard on September the 9th, has been a continual cycle of doubt and uncertainty over successive councils. I think Counselor Hendricks also mentioned that to me this morning. So I'm not sure, at the same time, we're still paying out approximately the same, we'll still be paying out the same amount of taxpayers' money, I think, or something similar.
You're assuming, but okay.
And, and we'll lose some of the, yes, we'll still be able to set criteria, but we won't have quite the same degree of control over what it's already said, isn't it? Apparently, there's no question this is an excellent program, that people move to Beaumont to take advantage of this program, I was told yesterday as well. So it seems to me the risks of doing this far exceed the likely benefits, and I can't therefore support it.
Okay, yeah, I said, I don't support it in its form, but you can't support it in any type of form, any type of halfway, like.
Then we have to go to further investigation of exactly how we're going to sequence and do this. And, and yeah, do we have time and energy to do that with all the other things we've got to do? And again, it wasn't one of the objectives of this to end the doubt and uncertainty, to reach a conclusion fairly quickly and to, and to progress in whatever direction it was that we chose.
Counselor Danilak.
Thank you, your worship. I'm in favor of supporting the recommendation as stated in the report. My position has been previously and remains, cost recovery is being the best venture. Past costs will go down for a number of reasons. First of all, it does maintain integrity of the program. It keeps the program equitable to the community as a whole. I don't support the C24, additional expenses being borne by the parents of the program, just the cost recovery to it. The September 9th meeting, those who attend the meeting, I spoke to a number of people, as we all did that evening, it was very clear to me that the people in the program support cost recovery. They're more inclined to keep the program the way it is. They value the program. The empirical evidence of how good the program is, is unparalleled. Teach us how good the program is for the kids. So I think the simplest way to do this is simply go to cost recovery and in some way or form. It's not our job to determine what cost recovery is. Administration will determine what that's going to be. If we're 85% right now and going to 100% cost recovery, it was all on the parents, all on administration, reducing costs, the company for the two, best administration's role to figure that out. Our job is to provide policy, and I'm in favor of cost recovery. I think it's the best way to go and the easiest way to go, to maintain the integrity of the program the way it stands right now. Thank you.
Counselor Monkoff Swain.
Thank you. Couple of things I want to say. So I've chaired a lot of these meetings recently, so I haven't really had a chance to say too much. I'm sorry, I'll take a short time to share this. First, thanks, Clements and your team for pulling all information together. I know it's a tough, a tough conversation, but I definitely want to acknowledge all the work that you did to pull it all together. Appreciate this hasn't been easy for staff, Ms. Williston, and the parents and the community. But I did want to acknowledge the respectful engagement throughout this whole process from everyone here who did reach out. It's a very passionate topic, and yeah, I really appreciated the respectful engagement that occurred through this. So I said from the start, personally, I'd like to explore all options before we get to the exit, and I don't think the recommendation that you've provided does that. I'd like to give the opportunity to the center for this great program to try and find out a way to see if they could make it work. So I don't support the subsidy as it is. I don't think it's equitable for the, for the community, but I would agree that I support a measured approach, and I'll get into measured in a second or maybe later on, but a measured approach to getting to 100% cost recovery, excluding that council policy C24. I want to be clear, though, and I've had some conversations about this, that, you know, I think administration has been very clear to council to, you know, as Counselor Danilak mentioned, our job's policy. There's a lot of information here about wages and whether we go 5% rollback and 10% wage fee increase, lots of stuff. I just don't think that's our job up here, and I wouldn't want us, I don't have the information that you have. I hope we don't get into that discussion tonight. I think that is something that administration should do. So I support the 100% cost recovery model and would look to administration to come back and figure out how you would get to that and have that conversation with your staff. So, yeah, I appreciate the discussion around the table and definitely a lot of passion, obviously throughout the community, but also up here with the seven of us. So, yeah, I just wanted to share my thoughts finally on this. So, yeah, I'd like to, I agree, I'd like to switch the recommendation and have administration come back on the 26th of November, whatever that day is, with the recommendation that we move to 100% cost recovery model and that we allow administration the time to be able to figure this out. This isn't something that can just happen overnight. We can't just magically get to 100%. So we could talk about the timing in a second, but that's where I stand. Thanks, your worship.
Fair enough. Counselor.
Thank you, your worship. And I don't support 100% cost recovery for a couple of reasons. One is I don't think it's viable. I think the way it is run now, right now, out of the city, makes it very difficult to make that cost recovery possible because of the wages, which rightfully so, city wages are above what they are in nonprofit world. Not saying that's right. I'd like for all childcare workers to be paid what they're worth, and they're not paid what they're worth. But that would be stepping into what the provincial government has not done, in my estimation. They have not given the proper amount of funding to municipalities or to anyone else to fund childcare workers what they deserve. So I think full cost recovery is very, very difficult for us to achieve. And what would be ideal, then nothing would have to change, we could continue status quo, we just collect all of that money. I think we're already collecting a lot of money from these parents, and I don't think that's possible. So I would not vote for that, but I would vote for a transition over a two-year period to a nonprofit. And I'd do whatever I could, and I'd help anybody to get there if they could, to develop that, another organization or another partner to develop that program. I think it's affordable. You can still maintain the quality that way, and the city then is no longer doing what the province should be doing.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So appreciate the position. What happens if we can't find that provider?
You're asking me directly. I think we do our best. If we can't form our own, or somehow the community doesn't want to step up and do that, then that's. If we can't form our own or somehow the community doesn't want to step up and do that, then that's a problem. And I think we tried. I don't think we, right away, put it on the shoulders of the parents. Because one of the really bad things that can happen, parents can't afford it, they have other options in town. You know, when it comes down to food on the table versus childcare, you sometimes have to pick the food versus... And that's sad that that's the way it might be. And if they have other options, then they leave, and then our program is not sustainable. And I don't want to see that happen, because then your quality goes down as well. Right? If you don't have a full number of children, you don't have enough money to run a quality program. So I'd like to try to keep it going for two years, but not as is. We'd have to put some money in. This isn't going to be, right now, anything more than additional resources to help develop that program. But that program would be something that we could be proud of in perpetuity, not something that... And I've seen it happen. Do I know it's not work? Absolutely. But we want to keep what we've developed. We've invested in this community, so I think we want to continue that investment.
Philosophically, I'm there. I just can't see how a partner takes it. To your point, let's try.
Well, we could be the partner. That was created in... Thank you, because I did read that in the report. Not we, the staff, the community. The community is the nonprofit partner. It doesn't have to be the why. It doesn't have to be boys or girls. We can create our own. It could be the Beaumont Childcare Society. There's a St. Albert Childcare Society. There's an Edmonton Childcare Society. That's created for this very reason. Because in the nonprofit world, the profit doesn't go into any one particular business owner. It goes into the running of the program. The money goes back into the program. That's what nonprofits all about.
Agreed.
So, I mean, I've seen successful models. It's hard, but I think it definitely can work.
Of the models, so there's still the sixteen percent that's out... And I apologize, I'm asking you the question. You've got a lot of background, but there is that sixteen percent gap. So that's the way to that model we incorporate, the Childcare Society. Eventually, you still have to find that way to make that break even for the nonprofit.
So if we transition, then it's up to the nonprofit. If after, I don't know if two years is feasible, but if it was two to three years, whatever that might be, the city would backstop it until such time as there... You know, it's a decreasing amount of money until the person is ready to go on their own or the organization.
So...
It's been done. It's been done in Edmonton. It's been done in St. Albert. It's been done in many places. I'm not saying it's without its problems, and it has its costs. You have to invest in them. But I do think it's viable. It's possible. To me, it's a better way than saying to the parents, "You've got to fit this whole bill right now." And I don't see that coming down. I appreciate saying to the administration, "Can you bring the cost down?" I don't think they're doing it. They're trying to keep the cost reasonable.
Yeah, and I, to be fair, I can say administration bring the cost down. I say administration. I say figure out how to, figure out where the sixteen percent comes in.
I don't think there's waste in the program right now. I mean, you run a quality program, you pay your staff top dollar, as much as you can afford. And they're doing the best they can all the time. And that's why it's as quality as it is, because the staff are excellent staff.
And there's no... And there's no getting around that you're going to, that no matter what we do here, we're going to have to fix the cost model somehow. Right? Whether we stick straightly in one hundred percent or we go with the task force, like I've mentioned with Cathy. The cost model has to be fixed, because it just...
Why not keep the program exactly?
Because I think we can strive for better. I think we can strive for better and bring quality childcare to the local city.
Could I answer that part? Why don't we keep it as is, I think, was what you said, in terms of running it as it is. Why would we go to a nonprofit? I think ultimately, I agree, the city shouldn't be in the business of providing childcare. Because that is the provincial role, if you ask me, you know, to be providing the funding. But we are subsidizing it with taxpayers' dollars. And I'd like us to not do that directly, but I don't think we can just get out of it now. I think we have to find a way to maintain what we've developed and then pass it on to someone who can run it.
Could we do both? Like, what's stopping us from working towards that hundred percent cost recovery? Emphasizing on the words "working towards." And then while we're doing that, try and find that...
Absolutely. Again, there's a point at which you're going to push people under the edge and they'll go somewhere else, understandably. So that would be my caveat on that. Cost recovery may not be possible. A hundred percent.
Councillor Danlock?
Thank you, Your Worship. I guess, as Clements mentioned, it comes down to more of a value situation. And I'm of the opinion, and again, I'm a little bit black and white, but, you know, if we're in, then let's be in and run the program, and let's own it, promote it. Do better at promoting. Beaumont's got a great excellence center for early learning. We haven't done a very good job of that, but we can if we control the program. Thank you. But what I meant to say, finish that, was that we can do that if we own the program. Or we get out totally. I don't want this being, I don't like having one toe in the water with partners in some way or form. I'd rather we make the decision that we're in or we're out. And if we're in, I'm on a cost recovery model, because then we maintain total control of the program, and we maintain quality programs under our, it's under our watch. And that's how I feel about that. I don't, I'm uncomfortable being one toe in the water in some way or form recommendations. I'd rather be all in or all out. And I think all out's the wrong decision. I think all in is the better decision through cost recovery.
Councillor Hendricks?
Hi, Your Worship. Thank you. You know, this matter's been brought to eight different councils and come to the exact same spot eight different times. Which is good, because it tells you that it brings us to the same conclusion each and every time. The conclusion problem is the thing that we've been trying to solve over the last, at least with me, twenty-two years. And not in talking, but in doing. So there's been opportunities to clean up the, let's get in full to the process. Part of that was a pro forma package that was done at one time to say, "Okay, maybe we need a bigger center. Maybe we need it outside of the rink. Maybe we need it somewhere else." And I sat on a committee that brought that forward to council when the AquaFit Phase Two was under design and a potential three-hundred-spot building was going to be attached to that facility. And then there was an opportunity to kind of mold both the facility, the AquaFit, Red Cross programs and other things, and the daycare, sort of the YMCA model, right? And so we took a run at that, but couldn't get a yes to that. I was part of the Early Learning Childhood Committee building that was brought in here. I helped negotiate that deal and bring it in here, because we needed something. And brought that in from Laduke and renovated it and turned it into what it is today. Was part of the, trying to make that daycare in the arena as big as we can. You know, we put windows in, we put another bathroom in, we, you know, we tried to create more space than we should have in that space. But the fact is, you know, couldn't get that done. There was another opportunity brought here where a third-party group was going to bring in an arena and attach it to Brack One and Two. And at that point, we were going to move our daycare out of that facility and move it into another facility and including the playground facility, you know? That didn't happen. Then we were going to put it at the CCBCC. That didn't happen. So there's been a lot of that's been brought to this chamber, and I've put a lot of time and effort and energy into it. For those of you who follow the campaigns and have your brochures, check mine out. It's quite clear as to where I stand with this whole childcare thing. I've tried my best to get it to something else, get it to a bigger program, get it to fit the pro forma package, which could make a business case for it. And, you know, it's equity. Like, everybody should have a shot at it. And subsidy. And I've made the case, I've had multiple CFOs where we've had arguments about, what is the accounting on this space? What's included in this space? There's accounting principles that are at it that I don't agree with, but that drives the math. And as a company owner, I've been on my own for forty years. I get it. Accounting's accounting. However, in this particular case, you can make the argument go one way or the other in terms of the subsidy levels. And we did have at one point Friends of the Daycare. And those people were good enough to raise funds. I mean, I met Mayor Ken Colby at the time, and it was an eighty-twenty split, and they were doing their thing. And then, but over time, they got worn out. Then they came back here and made the case why there should be no need for a Friends of the Daycare. And ultimately, that was disbanded. So we've gone full circle. I'm of the belief that you do the pro forma package. I was big on and giddy on three-hundred spots. I was giddy on putting it as part of AquaFit Phase Two. I was giddy on having it part of the Red Cross program, which would help subsidize some of the costs. You know, we even talked about the space next to, as you come into Colony Elders, that piece used to be called, you know, there was a little dress shop and what have you on there. And the building on those lands next door, there was a presentation here made saying, "This is where this childcare would go." Again, that crashed and burned. So there's been a lot of attempts, a lot of asks, a lot of wants, and we're still in the same spot, making the same arguments about what should we do with it. And I'm of the opinion that you perform at the thing, figure out where your line is in terms of numbers, get your three-hundred-person facility, hook it up to something that makes more sense than an arena, get them out of the rink. You know, we shouldn't be crossing roads to get to the playground, and it should all be in one facility. And, you know, I dare say when the little slippers was going to go into the CCBCC, I helped those people out in creating designs and, you know, doing potentially something in that space. And, you know, a million dollars later, they said, "No, we can't afford it," and they were out. So now our Friends of Black Elders in that space. But why couldn't we have been part of that, you know? And then we could have been part of that in terms of, you know, not only the daycare, but also, you know, the equipment that needs to be outside. And the transitioning in and out of that space would have been a whole lot separate. So we're in the same spot. So I'm just saying, let's figure this out. Let's figure out the math. Figure out where the subsidy levels need. Do the pro forma. Get us a bigger spot. It's got to be equitable. You can't have it that you can only have so many people, and if you happen to be on the list, and if you're planning perfectly to get in, you can get in. I don't agree with that. I think you should just be able to get in. And I think that you should do it in a way that understands the math and understands the space allocations. And we should have it as part of our community and its thirty. I've been consistent my whole twenty-two years here, so thank you.
Because that is the other way to go, span like crazy. Sure. Sorry, I'm considering what he said, so somebody's got... Sure.
You call it a pro forma, maybe I call it a task force. It might be the same thing. But I'd like to move that council set up a task force of two parents, two staff, counselors, maybe one, maybe two, maybe nine. I'm not negotiable on that, because I think it comes back to council anyway. But I do think that there's a number of us who have the desire, the knowledge, the will to work together with community to try to create a reasonable recommendation as to how to go from here without throwing the baby out with the bathwater. I think we're trying to keep what we have, so the parameters for this task force would have to be developed. The terms of reference would have to come back. So I would move that we move in that direction for a transition to a partner.
I didn't quite read it. I'm hoping somebody was taking notes.
What I captured was that you moved that council will set up a task force comprised of two parents and two staff to create a reasonable recommendation on where to go from here. So that's what you've said.
I was going to say, I think four people is a little small, and you might want to throw some, throw a council member on that one.
We might have to just develop the task force and come back with the terms of reference.
Councillor Moncalf Swain?
So respectfully, I think that's what we've done for the last eighteen months.
Well, yeah, go ahead.
I don't think that, with all due respect, the consultant's report was basically trying to solve the problem as we saw it and come back with some recommendations. I think it's left us with some unanswered questions as to how to implement it. I think he's done great work in giving us lay out the land as to what the options are. But now, in terms of how do you get there, depending on where there is, and how do you get there, I think you need some people to sit down and say, "Well, we know we've left the shore. We're no longer going to be status quo. We're into transition. What is that going to look like? And how long is it going to take us?" And what we need council to say yes to in order to get us there. That, to me, it's not status quo. It's moving us towards a new day with a timeframe, come back by such and such a date. Address these questions. Again, that's the detail that would have to be. Perhaps the help of the consultant could help us figure out what would that task force look like. But I don't think we can make a decision based on what we have today. There's a lot unknowns in terms of... We don't want to reinvent the wheel, but, you know, sometimes history, sometimes things don't happen when they happen because it's not the right time for it to happen. I appreciate hearing all that history, and I've lived through some of it, but not as much as you have, Councillor Hendricks. But how do we, we can't just say, "Nothing's going to work, so we do nothing." And cost recovery isn't going to work, in my mind. A hundred percent is not going to work under this governance model.
Can I make a friendly amendment?
Yeah, go for it.
You guys, it's time to talk. Is that the next meeting?
So I think, I think we're going to give them a chance to try and get there. I think, I think, so the friendly amendment would be, you know, setting out a period in time that council supports getting this to a hundred percent cost recovery over a certain time, which we can talk about. And in the meantime, yeah, this task force can work, and if there is an opportunity to offload it to a not-for-profit, a childcare, Beaumont Childcare Society, then I think that task force can still continue. But I think what we need to do is provide the certainty that if that doesn't work, if that model can't work, then at least we're still at a hundred percent cost recovery. So I think by providing that clarification, you can still do the work in the background, and I admire the passion. I'm sure there are a lot of people that would love to be a part of this. But at least we provide the certainty that this council supports, and I'm not saying your option doesn't, but the council supports that we're not exiting, that we're moving forward with this. And if we can make a hundred percent cost recovery work, great. If it doesn't work and your comments are realized, then that comes back to us and we talk about how we move forward. But I think we can do both those things.
Can I make a friendly amendment to your friendly amendment?
What's your motion?
Well, I think going towards a hundred percent recovery, I think you can go towards it. I think it may be difficult, if not impossible, to get there. But I don't want that to be the end result, because if the idea is, it's not just about the money. We've heard that. It's not just that council doesn't want to spend the money. We'd be prepared to spend more money if it was for quality childcare, at least I would, should speak for myself. But the idea is that at some point, council needs to get out of being the person, being the governing body, because we're not helping it grow. We've kept it stagnated. Councillor Hendricks has talked about this. Different ways we can do this, but we can't get there because we have limited subsidy, limited amount, a hundred percent cost recovery, but it's going to keep going up. Because wages keep going up.
Well, I don't, but...
In my experience, over forty years, they have, so eventually. But I just think you're not friendly part of that, is that what's the motivation? If it's just the money, then a hundred percent cost recovery, and then we're done. For me, it's not just the money. It's that I think we need a different governance model. We need to put it in the hands of the people, not this council. Which I would agree with that.
I agree with that. I think the concern is that if you do the task force for X amount of time, there's still going to be the anxiety through the community for as long as that time takes. And then if we can't get there, then we're back again here. And that's what is the concern for me. I think if we can provide that certainty that is there, and yes, I agree, you know, a target to a hundred percent, and let's see how that works out. Let's see what administration can come back to us with, not necessarily come back to us, but how they plan to do that. Let the folks who have been involved in this thing, that they can figure out ways on how they could do it. Give them a chance to form that not-for-profit society to do that fundraising, to offset some of those costs. I totally get that. But I think we need a, I think that option in doesn't give the certainty, which I was looking for coming into it.
Yeah. I can throw, like, I've got to admit, I'm not, I'd love to provide certainty, but the straight cost, one-hundred percent cost recovery model is a good secondary fallback position, but it does not, as Cathy mentioned, it does not give us the chance to expand. I mean, I sat on council in 2010, 2013, and we sat there, we looked at if we got totally out of childcare at the time and put that four hundred grand at the time... and put that 400 grand at the time into a building, we could have 450 spots. Couldn't get there. So I still think that expansion is the way to go because you can spread those costs over. And I think the task force is the way to get there. And as we're doing the task force to move out to expand the spaces and increase childcare in our city, 100% is not a bad way to go. Counselor Danlock.
Thank you, Your Worship. Respectfully, I disagree with the motion. This whole process began, and we're trying to put some clarity and some finality to the history of the situation, respects to Counselor Hendricks' history on this. We need to provide stability to the program, to the parents, to the community as a whole. The cost recovery model will set the program straight. It'll keep it on the straight and narrow. It'll give the parents certainty, the employees certainty. If down the road, one or two or three years from now, even six months from now, you know, if council wants to open a task force to explore options for the future, I can work with that. In the meantime, this whole motion, North's motion, got this whole process started, and spending $100,000 on this survey was to get some kind of a decision made. I came into this meeting tonight expecting to have some direction for a decision, and I'm not feeling that right now. So again, on cost recovery, as you all know, I'm still okay with that model. If there's room for expansion in the future, new facilities down the road, we can. But right now, our facility is capped for space. And I do believe the space they have now, although somewhat crowded, and I've talked to Jody, that's on the, you're the manager of the program. You did a great job, the space you've got. We have great outdoor facility. It's across the road, I get that. But the supervisor are very adamant about the children's safety. They've got two great outdoor playground areas for the small kids to use. It's a great use of space right now. I'm against the motion because I want to have a decision made right now that gives our council, the community, and the parents some level of certainty for the next couple, three years. If we decide to expand the program, that's a possibility. I wouldn't say no to that, I wouldn't say yes. But right now, I want some kind of decision. I'm not feeling right now, so I'll vote against the motion.
Counselor Hendricks.
Well, you know, the whole report is built to go in one direction. And I'm just saying, there's another direction. And if it's cost recovery, well, that's a good baseline to start from. But I would argue that we haven't looked at the other direction, you know? And in business, bigger is better, right? And typically, if you work through at least the pro forma documents that we had back at that time, and pro forma is simply taking all the parts, bits, and pieces of a daycare operator, you know, let's call it the revenue versus expenses, and where is the break even? Where is the line where, okay, if I have 200 kids in a room versus 300 kids in a room, you know, in a brand-new facility? We're currently in a 19, the facility was built in 1975. That's in need of repair. And having done the walkthrough there yet again, I'd say it's need of repair. It needs some help, it needs some money, right? Let's upgrade it. So why wouldn't I then take that and walk that into another situation where I can create some subsidy with it, which was the pool at the time? Because then I could create some subsidy. Or I've got a CC-BCC that's got a big hole in it financially. Why wouldn't I stick it in there, create more space, more people, more opportunities, and knock down that number, which is a heavily subsidized facility at the current rate? Why wouldn't I do that and go in there? And then, you know, have everything centralized in that space? I don't know. And I know we're looking at spatial requirements. We're looking at, you know, what we're going to do with us in this space, the library, CC-BCC. Why would we not take the daycare into account and work through it? So, okay, so baseline is we're trying to get the cost recovery because that's been the rub from the beginning. And the other issue is equity, that everybody has a shot. Why would we not then explore the equity piece? So this has got us to the point of, okay, we don't feel good about anything other than for cost recovery. Okay, that's good, fine, thank you. But now let's look at expansion. And where does that line take us where all of a sudden we're over the hump of, you know, that situation in terms of subsidy levels?
So respectfully, I think we have looked at expansion. I think that's, that was the initial recommendation that, and I know maybe not to the level of detail that you wanted it to be, but the initial recommendation to us was, hey, there's not enough space here. You've got 600 potential kids to be involved in the space. You've only got space across the board at 400. Now that information's come to light that these programs, who are always speculated, are now actually open. So we don't actually need those spaces because if we expanded for an additional 200 or 300 spaces, that may not, we may not need that. So I think, like, I totally get, I would, I'm with you. I'd love to be there. But I think the point is that the report looked at expansion. They said now with these new spaces, we actually don't need that additional space. So I think it's unfair to say that the report didn't look at that. I think that was the whole, that was the whole direction until.
Three days ago when they changed.
Okay, so, no, not at all. What I'm saying, from a business perspective, is that we have assets in this community. Some are cost this month, some are heavily subsidized. Why would we not move the daycare into one of those heavily subsidized assets where occupancy and other things are not exactly at 100%? Why wouldn't we not then take advantage of those spaces? Or do we just leave that asset, allow it to continue to, you know, be the wrong number at the bottom of the line year over year, and have this sitting out on its own? I'd say no, I would probably move this. And if I've got a high-level building like that, and I've got a daycare over there that's in a building that was built in 1975, I'd probably move it. And then understand that the subsidy that I got to pay anyway would then start offsetting some of my costs relative to the daycare. So I don't believe that this report has looked into that. And part of what I had suggested almost two years ago was that spatial planning, that we relook at everything from the library, this space, the CC-BCC, and try to make all of this work, and relook at the BRAC, you know, KENNIS, and get these kids out of the rink.
So I think we're all saying the same thing. I think we're all saying the same thing here. Like, yeah, you said, yeah, let's look at cost recovery. You're also saying, let's look at the spatial piece. I think that's what the task force would do, potentially.
That's what we said. If I may, I wanted to repeat, I don't have the friendly amendment, how it got worded, but it sounds to me we're strenuously agreeing with each other. Counselor Danlock, I wanted to check with because it sounds to me like you don't want the task force, but you want cost recovery. We're trying to get both.
Yeah, like.
Counselor Hendricks, I agree with you in that expand the program is a possibility in the future. That's a possibility. But you said yourself a moment ago, cost recovery establishes the baseline. You're a businessman, you must establish a baseline. Cost recovery will establish the baseline for us. And I'm worried, I'm not clear about the friendly amendment on the motion that.
I'm not clear on the motion exactly yet either, but we'll figure that out in a second.
Exactly. So at the end of the day, I just want to make, I know where you're going. I respect where you're trying to get to, but I just want to get something done tonight with some definitive direction. A task force could happen six months from now, a year from now.
I think you can, yeah, I was gonna say, I think you can go together. I think we can get your cost here.
It was properly worded. I mean, it was supportive, it was properly worded, but you know where I'm standing here. On the baseline model, we need to establish the baseline. In the space life, yeah, I agree with that. Let's talk about that down the road. But tonight, let's give some certainty. Let's make some of a decision. And I'm with you more than you think I am, Barry. But we need a baseline, right? And you, yourself, we need a baseline.
That's right.
Cost recovery is a baseline.
That's right.
Thank you. Paul, are you good?
No, good.
Counselor McAsbey.
So maybe I'll withdraw the friendly amendment. I think there might be two motions here. I think there is a motion to set up a task force and a motion to encourage more, you forgot the wording, but a motion to look at directing the childcare facility to get to that 100% cost recovery by X. Right, I think there are two separate things. And X is a very important discussion we've got to have. But I think there are two things here.
X can be part of the, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt you, but X can be part of the implementation plan that comes back, like timeframe and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, so I think that's an even better point that we probably shouldn't be debating at the time. We should figure out, let them come back and provide a recommendation on what they think is achievable. Thank you for saving me. But thoughts on the two? I don't want to vote for yours, and then you turn around and don't vote for mine.
Well, if we split, because like, honestly, I think, I think we can, I think we get the compromise. We can get to, we can get to cost certainty, and then we can get to expansion and partnering and moving forward and getting that bigger, grander thing. I think it's a good compromise. CEO has got his hand up.
Just wanted to clarify process-wise. Did we accept the motion from Counsel Barnhart? Because if that's the case, we need to deal with that, so.
Yeah, we've accepted the motion. Sooner or later, we got to come back, either withdraw it, amend it.
And that's the suggestion I was going to make. It sounds like you've amended it to the point that it might make sense to withdraw it and then reword what you're out there, unless you want that to be voted on.
No, no, we're probably, we're going to do something with it. But just as soon as I'm clear on what council's course of action is, we'll either reword, withdraw, amend. Counselor Danlock.
Actually, sorry, Mayor Stewart. Actually, Mike's suggestion, I was going to ask maybe to withdraw the motion and rephrase it. I was always sort of thinking, so it's more crystal clear?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Okay, so right now before, the discussion is to break the motion into two, go for, move towards cost recovery, and set up a task force to look into expanding this program and transitioning into a greater, grander thing. Having said that, I will let you word that so that it doesn't sound so. Sure, go ahead, unless you want to.
Of the second motion. Do we want to deal? I understand your concern. It would be mine as well if I'm trying to convince you and you're trying to convince me, but we don't vote for each other, that's not going to work. Okay, so do, like, I'm not sure why it has to be reworded.
What's the motion? What's the motion? And that's what I want to be clear about.
Reference, yes.
And then we can move to the second motion can be the cost recovery piece, so. What's the motion on the floor? I guess is the question.
That she moves that council set up a task force comprised of two parents and two staff to create reasonable recommendation on where to go from here.
Can we? Yeah, let's take out the reference to two staff and two, and we'll create the terms of reference and we'll figure it out, make up.
Council establish a task force, call it the Future of Childcare in Beaumont Task Force, to come back within six months or less.
Well, we're on a two-year time limit, guys. Election comes in 2021, we got to have something.
I don't think you can do it much less than, but anyway, six.
Well, the limitation piece can come after, but the decisions, decision-making process has to be done.
To address equity at the cost of childcare and the expansion of those three items. Cost, equity, and expansion of childcare in Beaumont.
And I think we should be looking for terms of reference in three months.
Three months? Terms of reference to return in three months. And the final thing to be done is.
We'll see what the terms of reference say. Are we good?
Is that clear?
Is that clear for council? So you got the term of the reference, then? I just, well, it's going to be a quick show of hands, and then this is a vote to bring it to a request for decision on the 26th. So this will be one of the things that comes forward on the 26th.
Given the priority and the sensitivity of this, I don't think we have a choice. Like, let's, we'll get this done. We'll get the terms of reference in front of you in three months.
Okay. All right, one more, one more time from the top, please.
Okay, the new motion is that council will establish a task force called the Future of Childcare in Beaumont Task Force to return in three months with the terms of reference.
Okay, to look at those three items.
Oh, sorry, it's to look at cost, equity, and expansion of childcare in Beaumont.
Okay. Motion one. Is everybody okay with that coming back to, for a request for decision on the 26th? Yes, yes. So is everybody okay with that coming back for a decision on the 26th? I need some hands in here. It's okay, Bill. You don't, you have another chance to argue against it if you want. Okay, so then Counselor Danlock's got a motion on cost recovery. Or do you want me to make it?
He moved the cost recovery model to 100% cost recovery? I don't want to put a date on it.
No, no, but.
Nope, I'm just saying, move cost recovery and just leave it at that?
Yeah, and then.
That's good enough for the 26th, right?
Good enough for the 26th, and then we can figure out the limitation out from there. Is council?
Get with that, yes.
Just to click, just to.
Okay.
Well, actually, I was just going to say that if I could.
No, I'm not entirely sure all the C24 costs should be excluded, so I'd like to see a breakdown of what those costs are and whether or not they should be included as part of the implementation of cost recovery. Okay, so I'm. I'd rather see a further conversation around what we're going to include and what we're not. And then if, once we go forward. But that's not necessary for today, that's not necessarily for the 26th.
I think that is for today without, I hate to draw this out, but all the information's here in front of us. I think the whole purpose is that we come back on the 26th with that clear. Like, I don't want to have that discussion again and then say, oh, we need more information again. So I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but the breakdown is there of all that information.
Which page, John? So where's the listing of what makes up C24? Where, which page? Help me out. I'm thinking rent should be included in the cost recovery. Do you want to know which page?
Page 605 or 72.
Yeah, let's have a quick five. We'll find out where this information is, and then we'll get back to it. It's attachment two?
Yeah.